Turn on your mic to Mayor. Fish, Johnson, Jorgensen, call.
Well, it's May, so we always like to update the the next five years of the capital improvement plan before we get into budget, which is coming up at least for staff in the next month. So what you've got, the first page there is the current capital improvement plan, starting with the core area reconstruction, Ironwood Extension, Big Sioux Drainage, and then the years that expenditures associated with those projects would be in place. So that's the current plan. We've got the Big Sioux Drainage, which is kind of in flux since the state's, it's painting about working with the state. Pool lift station, water treatment plant, which is underway. So that's, you know, definitely not going to change. The Bethany Sewer Main, which is the east side trunk rehab well number six, Rushmore area construction, Sioux Falls, or the sewer main to Sioux Falls rehab existing main, that's the force main, McCarty Bridge rehab, which is under, or soon to be underway in the next month or so. The west sewer main, which is done. Redwood Boulevard, Chestnut Boulevard, street construction, which is out. Exit 406, which will start probably next year. They'll bid it this fall is the plan. So we'll have some expenditures as a two-year project. Redwood Boulevard sewer reconstruction, water tower, which hopefully will get done here in the next little while. Golf course CIP, which is a number of things, park CIP, rainwater management CIP. So that's the first page. That's the projects that we've got underway or should be underway. You know, Rushmore area construction, we're on the next phase already. If you haven't been over east of, east of Split Rock, you'll notice that we've torn things up. So what we're trying to do now is look at updated cost figures for those projects from 2024 on, and then take a look at any new projects the council would like to take a look at. And I went back and looked at last year's or even the year before, just to give you an update on on where prices are going. You know, the Ironwood Extension, when we first started talking about that was 1.4 million. We're 2.9 now for that. Big Sioux Drainage was at a little over a million. We're at 1.4. Pool lift station was 525. We're 680. The east side sewer, we're at one point, a little under 1.2. If we were to do the same size project, it'd be four and a half million. The sewer main to Sioux Falls was at 7.3 million on the original cost estimate. We're now looking at 15. Exit 406, we're at a half a million dollars. We're at a million now. Utility relocates and probably Express Avenue.
Yeah, and I think we can just cut Express Avenue out.
So, you know, that's just to give you some, some information as to where we started on some of these projects and the price increases that we've been subject to over the last couple of years. You know, prices are kind of out of control on construction projects. A lot of that has to do with COVID funds that have come into the state that everybody's trying to get their hands on or have their hands on. Those funds have to be expended by 2026. So everybody, cities are spending a heck of a lot of money in the last couple of years since it's free. But it's having a major impact on our projects. They have gone up significantly. For instance, I didn't even talk about the core. When we started talking about the core, geez, 2019? Five years ago, estimated cost for total reconstruction of the core was 20 million. We are at 42, almost 43 million now. On the core? Probably.
First phase was about eight.
Yeah.
Two and three was about.
Four. So we're 12.
Two is done.
So if you remember, we had it broken down into five phases. We did first phase all as one, and then we split the second phase into two years. So we're on the second half of the second phase. Three phases?
Three full phases, but we're splitting them in half, so.
That would be six more projects, twelve more years.
So what I'm telling you is, or what I'm trying to tell you in a convoluted sort of way, with the price increases, you know, what we were dreaming about when we first started doing the CIP plan, probably isn't going to happen. We, we, we will run out of money much sooner than we planned due to the price increases.
Were we thinking that we would start running out of money this year or next year originally?
Originally, I think it was starting to in 2025.
And that's about the price increase?
Right.
Yep. And maybe, we've had significant price increases in the last year to 18 months.
And when we say running out of money?
For projects.
Does that mean like money that is preserved or, or everything that's preserved?
No, when I say we're running out of money, we finance most of this with sales tax revenue bonds. We will start running out of, and when we sell a sales tax revenue bond, the bond companies look at ratios, just like a mortgage. Want to make sure that our sales tax revenue can cover the increased debt. So we're starting to bump up against that ratio. And we probably won't be able to get too many more sales tax revenue bonds to finance stuff. So when I say we're running out of money, we got.
The whole comes down to cash flow. You have so much revenue coming in and out with expenditures. When you have, you're borrowing four and a half to five million dollars for a project, that's a 400 to $500,000 annual debt. So when you add that on to the debt service for the year, that really affects your cash flow.
Yep. So as part of this process, Christina will take a look and we'll sit down and talk about projected sales tax revenue forecasts over this timeframe as well to see what we can and can't afford.
So what are we supposed to start with next for the?
2B.
Third and Dogwood.
We would be more than happy to skip third. Well, that's, that's something we want to talk about a little bit. Christine and I have talked. Probably pretty soon, probably 24, maybe 25. It might be good to take a break or two, or break for a couple of years on projects, just to let the bidding environment settle down. You know, we've overlaid fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh in the core, which buys us a little bit of time. Now, it's not going to last forever, but it does buy us a little bit of time. I think the Rushmore project this year, especially on Cedar, will address some of the worst surfacing over there. It doesn't address the pipes under the ground, which we still need to fix. But we might just need to hold off on some projects. We have.
Maybe the residents would like us to take a break too, if they realize the disruption.
Well, I hate to say that with the residents because I think they're kind of into the swing of things. You know, they know that, okay, we did, it's coming. We did it this year. We get two years off. It's going to come back. So at least they're in the mode. I hate to get them out of the mode.
When we did that first one, that church was packed with people. But the project got done. We did first phase of Rushmore. That open house had racks up. And by the time we did the second thing of course, because they saw what we were doing. So now with all those people upstream from when the project started are up going, hey, now, yeah, we can work, do it, unfortunately, but.
Can we just do a little project? We don't need a lot of those. And like you said, you know, if the bidding environment is so poor price right now, you think it'll come back down?
26, they've got to have the projects done. So that'll be the last.
I don't know if we'll get back to pre-COVID pricing, but I think, you know, we can get it down hopefully. Contractors are so busy right now. I mean, they're, they're just busy. Some of them don't need the work and so they're, if they're bidding, they're bidding high because just, you know, if they do get it, but yeah, the.
If we can get to a year break, how much debt will we pay down? We're not adding more to it.
Well, I don't know if you're really going to pay down any debt. You're just going to continue to pay on those bonds. So yes, you'll pay down some, but we are here shortly. We'll also be talking about a city hall. And if you want to move forward to the city hall, then that's going to add on yearly lease payment as well.
Well, I think we really need to continue on that east side sewer project because that's powerful.
Yeah, you know, the city committed to that a few years ago. So I think we, we need to maintain that one. I'd hate to back out of a commitment that we made. Originally, yeah, originally we were, we were going to run that up to Redwood. Now I think we're just going to run it up to where the school and Chestnut Ridge make the connection.
Will that limit our development in that farmland or? For the most part, like all of Tony Bash's land could still be developed. It might get a little bit tricky right around Redwood there, but overall, once we stop it kind of right there at the end of the school, the north side of the school, that would plenty.
Because, you know, like I mentioned, when we, when we committed to doing that project, it was about 1.2 million. Now, if we would do the whole thing, it was four and a half, 4.6.
It is, but we can't, we can't overbuild either. Like, we can't build it too soon because we're covering it. And actually, we're, we're covering those costs, but really the resident, the current, current residents are covering those costs. And our sewer rates are as high as anywhere around, around the area. And we really cannot afford to increase those any, anymore.
You know, and the big one that's, that's coming that we, we have to do is the sewer force main to Sioux Falls.
And that'll be another surcharge.
Yep, and we.
Can't take on that debt.
We may be able to buy a little bit of time, but that's going to, that, that's a must. Without that. No.
Well, it's more of a part of the point, the developer that's out there, that we build it just to school. Is it, how easy is that? Is it to scale out, extend it? Is that challenging? Stop it or?
No, it'll all be placed correctly. So if the developer still comes, they can add on to it.
And we may, you know, with, with that east side trunk in particular, if somebody wants to develop further than that end, we just may have to look at the developer and say, we're going back to the old way. You have to put it in.
So when you say you stop it, it's still, what with the, which would overheat and?
Nick Van Oberschild.
That would take, that would still take care of that.
Yep, that's Chestnut Ridge. So we would bring it up to basically the north school property line, and then they would connect from there.
So if we backed up on the core, say to a, you have that Ironwood name out there, we have the base drain, which I think we have to do.
Yeah, the kind of the ones we tend to at least still find on doing would be Core 2B, which would be Third Avenue, Big Sioux Drainage.
And the Big Sioux Drainage, we've always talked about taking out of fund balance.
Yep. East Side Sewer Main.
No, we have to, we'll do 2B.
We can do 2B, but I think anything beyond that's going to have to pause. Same.
Yes.
Yeah. I think we're in a design for that.
Now, Ironwood, let's talk about Ironwood. Ironwood brings Ironwood Extension from Sioux Boulevard into Aspen Park. So everybody knows where it's at. When we talked about it, was that a year ago, the special assessment stuff? It's a new street. That part of Ironwood is a street. Once it reaches Aspen Park, it's no longer a street. It's a driveway for us. So whenever the city builds a new street, we have special assessed that against the affected property owners, the benefited property owners. So whenever you do special assessments, as if you remember the annexation area, people become very upset. They don't think that that is fair, that they have to pay for the streets in front of their house. So if you remember last year when we talked about it, Ironwood was about 2.2. Is that the, the number that we talked about last year with them? It's now to 2.9. So that means everybody in that area's assessment is going to go up. Now, we're looking at an area assessment to include Aspen Park. So the city would, would pay a much larger portion than we normally would on that project. So we would be assessing the property to the south, which is, it was owned by Devon Coughlin's dad. It's now owned by Queering Hucids. There's seven acres, I think, there that's owned by the Peterson family. It's on the northeast side of Ironwood. And then there's three existing homes that are there. And then Justin Oakland's development would also be assessed, a portion of that. That's the area assessment. So we're trying to spread it out as much as we can. Conversation Friday with the Wellness Group. If Ironwood doesn't get built, it doesn't impact construction of the hockey rink or the wellness facility or, or the soccer complex down there. That's not dependent upon Ironwood. It is a second entrance in and out of, of Aspen Park. So just fair warning, if we want to proceed with Ironwood, it's special assessment. We will be revisiting that with the residents.
Can we do a special assessment on those? How long do you give them?
We match, we match the bond term. So what we've been doing.
Typically, we've only done 10 years, but that's not saying we can't do 15.
You always try to match special assessments to the bond. And if you remember, we made the decision a couple of years ago to go to 15-year bond terms on our projects, just to lessen the burden. We have that, we, we can go out 20. But then that debt just hangs on forever. And it doesn't really, I mean, it affects cash flow a little bit. It reduces that cash flow expense, but it really limits what you do in the future because it's, it's always there. Engineers, Tammy's been in contact with the various engineers that are working on projects. So that's where we're getting those cost assessments from. The Ironwood specifically is from the updated cost for the Rushmore project.
So the current one that was bid on Rushmore this year, they plugged all of those numbers in there into the Ironwood?
For asphalt and piping sizes and all that good stuff.
Well, so, I mean, special, they send a special assessment. So the question is, will the prices come down supporting those orders on the rest? Do they still get special?
Now, I mean, getting back to special assessments, that's been our historical practice. If we build a street, we special assess it. The city, the council can make that determination that you don't want to special assess the project. And then the city would eat all of that cost. Now, the ramification of that is if I'm a developer, I'm not building any streets. If the city's paying for Ironwood, you know.
Why am I, why am I, as a developer, paying for it?
Also kind of see the homeowner, like, you know, we bought.
Yep. So, you know, you certainly can make that decision. I'm, I would not advise it. It certainly sets you up for some issues in the future.
Well, I guess the, my concern would be how fast our, is Wellness Center and the hockey plan, you know, it's just going to add more traffic out there, obviously.
Depends on who you talk to. If you talk to them, they're ready to build tomorrow.
One thing about hockey is they're kind of an off season, you know, the winter months. So I don't know that that would be as much of an issue.
Talking with Wellness, they explained Friday that they're maybe, they're, they're leaning towards three phases. If you remember the horseshoe plan in the paper, they'd be looking at doing the soccer fields or turf fields first. And then when they can afford it, they would move on to the middle section, which was the offices, the racquetball courts, the gym space. And then the third phase would be the basketball courts.
Also, nice to have a construction base. I mean, I've always thought construction, you know, same deal.
You know, we, we don't know the, the, the meeting we had with Wellness on Friday. I think, I think we all have an understanding of the process now. I don't think they're happy with that process at all. So I would imagine that you folks will be getting some phone calls. You know, one of the, we explained, once the MOU, the language in the MOU is, is acceptable to staff and legal, it then goes to park committee and then eventually goes to the city council. In the meantime, planning and zoning is working on revising the use, permitted uses in the institutional zone, which the park is zoned. And part of that discussion that we've had, that Wellness did not appreciate, is at this point in time, we would prohibit for-profit businesses in the Wellness Center. They've talked about a Starbucks or a gym space that would be privately run. They did not like that requirement. So I think it's in their business plan that they would rent out that space for their cash flow. The problem we have is now all of a sudden, we've got a private entity sitting on city property that was donated in competition, or potentially in competition with tax-paying entities, like other gyms or coffee shops here in town. So I would assume that they will be calling all of you. Because the comment was made, well, that's staff's decision. It's not council's. That's also legal's opinion. There's, there's potential tax ramifications of, right now, we're nonprofit, they're nonprofit, so nobody pays any property taxes. If you bring in a for-profit business, it may become taxable, or a portion of it may become taxable, property tax-wise, not sales tax-wise, but property tax-wise. So that's where Wellness is at. We'll see how they. Yep, same thing with, and we talked about it, Washington Pavilion has a cafe in the Washington Pavilion. Now, the difference is, those are city-owned facilities, and the leases are with the city, not with a third-party nonprofit. So the city is the one that's receiving the rent checks on those. So we're, we're leasing the property to them for, well, you know, it's a donated property that they want to build on. And then we would determine the lease rate after the first year of operation based upon our costs for mowing and soil removal, et cetera, et cetera. You know, looking at it quickly, the donation for just the Wellness Center, somewhere between around $800,000 in land costs is what the city is donating, not including the $380,000 that we put in last year for the water and sewer mains. So, you know, we're already a fairly large contributor to the project. So anyway, back to the CIP. You know, Core 2B is underway with design. So we would, we would complete that.
Ironwood's also been designed?
Ironwood has been designed. Probably. I mean, the, the thing that's going to hold up Ironwood is a special assessment process. If we want to do Ironwood, then we need to get rolling on that fairly quickly, which involves notices to the affected property owners, a series of hearings, some resolutions that come, and I'm paraphrasing, so it's a little more complicated, but a series of resolutions, resolution necessity. And then we do it a little bit different than what state law would let us do, in that we, we probably won't let the bid until all the concerns of the property owners or the potential lawsuits of the property owners are taken care of. Because if we were to go forward with it as state law would allow us, we would let the bid, we would do the project, we would certify the assessments, the property owners would then sue us. And those assessments may or may not be set aside. So now all of a sudden, if they're set aside by the courts, now we've got extra revenue that we have to make up to pay for the set-aside assessments.
We talked, we talked last year about the Hucids. About maybe piggybacking with their, are they, they kind of?
Haven't heard, haven't heard anything from them. And Petersons have been quiet. Haven't heard anything from them. I don't think the courts necessarily look at whether that road was necessary or not. The city council has that determination. You have a resolution necessity that says this project is needed and needs to be done. What the courts rule on is the amount of the assessment. So you can only assess what the increase in property value is to the, to the assessed properties.
I mean, you know, there's only seven, I'm going to say seven. What can't we have a, like a conversation with all of them before, before we have a, like, public thing and then make it, and they want to sue us?
We can.
We have.
They, they, they did, they couldn't make it last time. We were just talking about it and they showed up real mature. And, you know, thinking back even to the annexation, we were already getting phone calls from lawyers before the study. They aren't in our emails, they wanted everything. And like, we didn't even have to report to Seacow yet, a lot of the budgets didn't look like, and they were already sued. So, and it just, you know.
No, it, once the council makes a decision to include the ironwood in the project or in the list, we'll, we'll sit down with the property owners, say, here's what's going on, here's all of our cost estimates. You know, we'll be transparent with them.
And we've done that with the old cost estimates. And now they've doubled.
You know, um, so our daughter left recently, so I think the recent paper, they had a special assessment in the downtown, downtown development. They took it to court, judge came back, the, the over, so it's.
Been there, done that in a prior city. So I, I do have some reservations about it. Yeah, if it happens, it happens. And then, and then you figure it out.
And so the folks with Houston's just recently bought a part of your city.
Yeah, they bought everything from what would be ironwood all the way down to Houston's.
So would they, would they purchase that? I mean, does the expectation already that they can access this through the park? They can access this through the, the stoplight? That park or make?
Park.
So they can access this through the park? They don't need to be, necessarily access it?
Well, they're not, either, when they purchased it, did they understand that all of their, their, what, like, they need?
That, I don't know if that was disclosed or not.
Different for them because they're gonna sell off lots to develop them, so they can cost cover all of that as they develop it. So for them, it's just, where we run into it is with the homeowners who are gonna argue that it, it increased the value, in fact, devalued the property.
They're all sitting on good-sized properties.
Yeah.
It was interesting to find out, you know, it's, it's, ironwood right-of-way is not owned by the city.
Oh, yeah.
Although, for some odd reason, we were plowing the snow there for those property owners. Well, we found out we don't own it. So I did get a couple of phone calls from property owners this winter. Hey, could you come in and plow snow for us? Uh, no, we can't. We don't have an easement. We don't have anything. Sorry. Well, it's like anything else, we'd have to acquire the property, whether the current owner is the Petersons. Uh, they have the choice of donating it to us. Or if they wanted to buy it from them, then that cost just goes on to the project cost. And some of the property owners didn't understand why we would include the purchase price, if there is one, into the project cost. Well.
It's part of the project.
It's, it's like buying a house. You, you buy the land too. Some cities, to avoid, um, issues, will do a pre-assessment and then a projected valuation of the, of the properties after the street is done. At least they do it upfront, but I, I, you see a lot of DOTs do it, but I just don't know if it, how accurate it is. I'd have to go back and look.
The lowest one was forty-eight thousand dollars on old dollars. So you're talking.
On, on old?
On old. And that's on one property. We actually went, we actually went area method.
Some of it is on front edge, like the sidewalks, and a lot of it's on area.
A lot of it's area. Well, that's how we tried to get it down.
Yep.
I mean, if, if you want to move forward with it, what I would probably recommend is this year, moving through the special assessment process to see if we can even get any movement on that. And then bid it out spring of next year, or this winter, depending on the timing of the special assessment process, but. Cause there, it, a special assessment is a process and it does take several months to get through. And then if you have opposition to it, it's gonna take longer.
So anyway, I would venture to guess, regardless of, of costs, we will probably have three lawsuits over the assessments. I mean, that's kind of in my mind, anyway. Unless we build it for free. We'd have, we'd have to look at the numbers and see what it is.
What do you mean?
What our share would be with assessments versus entire costs.
Well, it's.
It would certainly affect future projects on the list, but the more dangerous thing in my mind is you're setting the city up.
Setting us up.
In the future for, you set a precedent there, you paid for all of ironwood.
Yeah, the developers are, are the ones that are really gonna gain off of it. And if you don't assess them.
I'd only say it's forty-eight thousand, and the judge comes back, does, does overprice that. They, they still have to pay twenty-four thousand, so we're about twenty-four.
Right.
Yep.
And for the existing homeowners, can we, can we do a percentage?
Nope, you've got to assess all affected property owners the same, the same method.
Uh, the, based on the land?
Yep.
So is that two-point-nine included purchase of the land?
No. Doesn't.
Uh, he did not include it actually in the cost estimate.
Land is not included. Land is not included in that cost estimate.
Well, it's still under an opinion of who actually owns it. If you ask legal, she thinks we own it. So there's that battle too. If you wanted to go that route, just saying.
So sixty-six, I think it's what, sixteen hundred feet long from, or is it thirteen hundred? Eighteen hundred? No, DOT won't.
We do, but DOT will not give us an access.
So we apply with state? Are we applying to property owners?
We'd be looking at buying, uh, two and a half to three acres. Yeah, well.
I think we estimated eighty in there, eighty thousand, I think, for the land when we were doing special assessment, estimating and everything.
In my four years, nobody's asked for it. But I've also had people that are complaining because we're not looking close on the court. So, cause I have a lot of comments with people about the court. We're excited.
So you don't think it's gonna afford, come here, sir?
Ask for bargains, it's, it's for fifty years. Now, if, if we could get some development, maybe, I, I don't know.
If, if, if with.
Our population's been a lot of fifty years too good, that'd be more people, that'd be more people.
Yeah, I mean, one accident, I mean, I've been down on the tornado large block, it's asking us.
It's kind of the chicken and the egg kind of thing, too, you know, that's why I get development because it's not a little large, but you gain the development by putting it there first. It's, it's fantastic. Been building it for a lot of years now, I can tell.
Parkport is in favor of it. I'm not sure though, given CP's numbers, how, I mean, they would be, I still think they would be.
Yeah, with the cost, they cut down. I mean, people are, all the projects are done, like, a lot.
But it's half-tempted to get everybody in the area, all the cities together and say, you know what, we're not doing anything for about three years.
Yeah.
Deal with it, contractors.
But what's a normal five percent increase you figure a year?
Inflationary typically, I mean, that's the number that's usually thrown out as five percent year-to-year, but that's.
Well, and one big discussion point too is that the city of Superfunda is doing a really large sewer project. And instead of, you know, trying to reach out to those out-of-state contractors that are really large, you could probably bring in their own crew and do the whole thing. They want to keep it local. And so they're trying to split it up into multiple projects, which will take all of our contractors. So hoping they change their mind on that.
So we can certainly throw it in the, the mix and do a little more analysis on it as to what the two numbers would be as far as special assessments, using the same formula that the council agreed to when we added, I think we added all of Asman Park, didn't we?
I think that was the.
Yeah, the discussion was half of Asman Park or what, Asman Park wasn't developed versus the entire Asman Park. So we decided to go with the entire acres of Asman Park as part of that assessment area. So we'll take a look at, with the new numbers, we'll probably include acquisition cost as well as using the old for, or the formula for figuring out assessments.
I mean, plan. So just as a comparison, if we did a front-end assessment, do we know how much more that would be for them if they asked?
We can figure that out. I think it'd be pretty significant.
I think.
I think the biggest thing was when the developers don't get a very big piece of it, like Justin Altman, he would only have fifty-five feet of it, where the majority of his development happens from it.
Have they not figured that out yet?
No. I don't think they ever will. Conversely, if you look, if we're gonna do a front-foot assessment, the city's assessment will be sixty-six feet. That's all the property we own that would be adjacent to or immediately adjacent to ironwood.
And the ones that are gonna benefit from it the most are the developers. Well, the about, and if you do a front assessment, your current residents are paying more than, you know, it, it doesn't really put it more on the developers. And that's why I went area as well.
I don't advise doing what the city did when Sioux Boulevard was done. They just randomly picked a number out of thin air for the special assessment with no, they said, we're gonna go fifteen feet, or fifteen dollars linear foot.
What, what part of Sioux?
From Holly.
Holly to.
Down to.
Park.
Park. So we will, we will take a look at ironwood. We'll take a little bit deeper dive into it. Any other, any other projects or any other ideas that the council would like to take a look at?
Well, um, when we had, so I see you got something for, for Parkport. Last year, Parkport got cut really hard. So I told them to put something into, they've got several projects. Put something in there because, um, our sales tax dollars are up and we can't just go zero on parks. Cause then we're gonna have to start all over again. So there is money in here for parks.
Yeah, so the, the numbers in here are not taking in consideration of financials. So Park has money all the way across. You know, we've put in Core, all of it. We've put in Rushmore, all of it. So it's not taking any consideration of the finances. That's what we're kind of here for, is where's your priorities? We are gonna dwindle and, uh, it is gonna get very tight. So some of these projects, we do need to halt. But where are your priorities?
What?
Can we call, say, something up the floor that maybe we can, you know, something for?
Yeah, what we'll do, the way I look at CIP is you prioritize the projects for us. And then we look at revenue and which ones, you know, where's the cutoff point for the next five years?
It's four twenty-four, we got two hundred eighty for Park, so. I would say it's like.
Oh, that's the old plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, the new plan has five twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, you know, that, and that's all based upon sales tax revenue.
Yeah.
If, you know, sales tax remains strong like it has, that will provide some extra dollars that we could put somewhere, whether that's in parks or, or paying cash for some projects instead of bonding for them. Or it'll allow us to do an extra project with debt. But we have, you know, we've been very aggressive in the last five, six years, um, with projects.
How much have we spent the last five years?
Oh, I, I brought one, I think, last year. I brought that whole sheet. I can bring it again.
Like eighty-five million, fortunately.
That was a lot.
And we still have a hundred and ninety-two million to go where that number is.
No, we, you know.
Some of the eight-five out of that, because we're only a hundred million left.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And we make three million a year.
Sales tax, four and a half.
Four and a half, four hundred million and four and a half.
Inflation, direct sales tax up too.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It is, isn't it? It just kills everybody's dreams.
How much of the deposit, all of that, you got?
Uh, sure.
A lot.
A lot.
About fifty credit, see, we're starting from say.
In the general funds, we have twenty-one million. That's general fund only.
Nope.
No, well, you add another eighteen million on for the water treatment plant alone. Eighteen million is the water treatment plant.
Now fortunately, the, the water treatment plant doesn't count against debt capacity because it's a surcharge.
That's sewer as well.
Just water for the water treatment plant?
What do you mean?
Oh, no. That's extra.
I'm looking up, yeah, you have your.
Got what, two debt for the sewer? We've got the.
Water and sewer is at twenty-seven point eight million.
Debt?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
No, that includes the eighteen.
And golf course is three hundred and fifty thousand. So you have almost fifty million dollars in current debt. And all of that is, like, pretty recent. We don't really have a lot dropping off. We do have Holly, Holly Boulevard, if you can believe that, is dropping off. And we only did that, we did that in two thousand and eight.
Yep.
Um, but other than that, the rest of them are really new and it'll be a while before they drop.
We were really black for a long time.
Mm-hmm. It can only wait so long.
Yeah, I, I had always, when we first looked at Rushmore or those two things, it was fairly important because I've always looked at, since everybody started talking about getting workforce housing, I had always said, we are a capital, we just need to make it more accessible for, for Rushmore. And there is a big difference between affordable housing and cheap housing. And there is a big difference between portable housing and cheap housing. And the city have an impact on whether or not that housing is portable. So that's why those two projects, I think, is very important. And we died without water.
And we don't want to stop.
Well, we could go in a pot, go another window, I guess, like.
Barry, since, I just did a appraisal today, a nine hundred and seventy-five square foot house, unfinished basement, two bed, two bath. Sioux Falls is on three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Seriously? So a, a split?
A split foyer, nine hundred and seventy-five square feet, regarter option, two beds, two baths.
Well, that's what did it. It was that extra, it was that extra stall.
Yeah. Three hundred and twenty thousand, unfinished basement.
This is why you can't build, you can't build new. That is no good thing.
And they wanted a three car garage.
That's what we're, we're lost. Well, I'm just thinking how much the problem is. Right, they have, they have a ton. And they're not doing.
What else we need, Brian?
That's it for now, uh, if you, if something pops into your head that, hey, we'd like to have you take a look at or get a cost estimate for something. Let us know soon. And then, you know, we can, we can throw some quick numbers at it and throw that into the mix. In the meantime, we'll start taking a look at refining revenues, uh, to, at least with what we're comfortable with. And everybody knows I'm pretty conservative when it comes to sales tax revenue forecasting. I'm still waiting for the reception, or the recession that's coming, according to Buffett.
And I'd like, I'd like to spend now and set some of our balance, and I know part is gonna be on the Big Sioux drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Big Sioux drainage, so finishing up the golf course retaining wall, we got exit four oh six. So there's already projects that have been slated for that.
Yeah, cause I think last year our fund balance was eightish.
Yeah.
So retaining wall is one point six. If exit four oh six is somewhere between a half a million and a million, we're at two to two six. And then one four for Big Sioux drainage. That brings us down to a fund balance that we're comfortable with. Half of our, typically, we try to keep half of our general fund operating cost in the fund balance. I know. Oh, that was, that wasn't even in the picture last year when we talked about it. Lancer Avenue is the new north south street out in the Hague Development on the west end of town. So there's going to be a need for a traffic light there. Uh, and Fairway, who has purchased the west lot, is pretty insistent on a stoplight. So the total project cost, if we were gonna do that whole intersection correctly, is about five million. Yep, cause it's turning lanes and drainage and it's not just a stoplight.
You gotta take it all the way to Heritage pretty much, because we've got, you know, it goes wide by the bridge to skinny down to two lanes back out by Sandstone, past Heritage, and then it goes back to a road section, so.
So the kind, the kind of the approach that, that we're taking is let's just do the stoplight for now. And then, if you remember Sioux Falls and, and us in the county are doing a corridor study on Holly Rice. So once that gets done, we can start programming in the other four and a half million dollars.
Which by then will be seven.
Yeah, well, hopefully no, cause hopefully that'll be twenty-eight or so and it'll, you know, contractors will be a little hungrier.
Do you mean to put a stoplight up where we're on?
Yeah. As long as it meets warrants criteria, I don't know why we call it warrants, but that's what they do. As long as it meets warrants, if you put up a stoplight and it doesn't meet enough warrants and there's accidents, which there are, there's typically accidents increase when you put up a stoplight. Cause everybody forgets it's there. Um, the city could be liable for installation of a stoplight that doesn't meet warrants.
Fun fact, Heritage one doesn't exactly meet warrants.
Yeah.
And so there's gonna have to be some timing change there too. Because they're close together.
We should, a couple of other ones we added to this new capital improvement plan is the McCarty lift station. Had about seventeen million dollars. And this is where we kinda think that we can't fund some of these developments anymore. We really have to halt. We, our current residents can't take on that load. Um, so some of these developers are gonna have to pick up some of those costs.
Would, would that serve the solid land of the Russian, or outside?
Yes.
Aspen, so the developers saw that land that's being marketed.
Does that include the main interceptor going up through the golf course too, or is that just the lift station and the force main?
Just the lift station and the force main.
That's what I thought. Now, when we first started talking about the McCarty lift oh so many years ago, it was about eight or nine million, but that included a new, a new line going up through the golf course to pick off a half a dozen lift stations that we would like Pioneer Park and the golf course lift station. That seventeen million or whatever we've got in there doesn't include that. That's just the lift station itself and the force main from there to connect up here somewhere.
So if we, if we can use that, what's our alternative, with the developer?
Well, the developer that's currently working on Aspen Ridge, which is the name for the, the property south of the golf course, he's looking at putting in his own lift station right at the moment that would serve about two thirds of that property. And then when we would build the, the McCarty lift, that would just gravity flow from that lift station down to the McCarty lift.
And we have to stay back or not?
No.
Again, they're the, they build them into their land cost, they're the ones that are making money. No, we don't, we certainly do not make a lot off of developers.
So, you know, we committed to do the west side trunk and the east side trunk. You know, unfortunately, we're not like Sioux Falls who has a plan to open up certain areas and they extend those mains out. And then they do impact fees, development fees, or whatever you wanna call them, cost recoveries. We don't have that luxury to speculate. And we could, we just don't know when we would recover the costs.
I still have cost recovery that we haven't recovered from that are back to early two thousands that I haven't recouped. Cause they haven't been developed yet or they haven't come in city limits or they.
They don't.
I would assume they're having developers pay for it all.
Land is cheap, right, so they work?
Yeah, land is cheap in some of those communities. You know, it wasn't all that long ago that land around here was going for fifteen to twenty an acre. Not anymore. Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, the only other ones we added was City Hall and Public Works Building, um, currently, as you know, working on a C Hall RFQ. So those are, what I put in there is really lease payments. Now those are hopefully at the top end of the lease payment, depending on the term that we would do. And then Public Works, we'd like to kinda get started on, uh, next year after we kinda get City Hall figured out, kinda do a design on that and figure that out. Hopefully start moving forward with that as well.
So, all good news.
Mm-hmm.